Come to order. We'd like to welcome our guest to the Washita.
Perry School Board Meeting, come any time that your schedule will allow. Ms. Micas call roll please.
Mr. Como.
Here.
Ms. May.
Here.
Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Mr. Hicks.
Here.
Mr. McCoy.
Here.
Mr. Graves.
Here.
Mr. Manley.
Here.
Let's stand please for the pledge to be done by Board Member Debo Graves.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to be done by Board Member Greg Manley.
Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, we just love and praise and glorify you, Heavenly Father, and we just thank you for the opportunity we have to serve on this board. And Heavenly Father, we just ask for your wisdom and guidance today as we make decisions to impact our school system, our children, and our teachers, administrators, and ask for your wisdom and guidance, Heavenly Father, if we do that. Most of all, we thank you so much for your plan of salvation, for Jesus carrying that plan of the cross, and just what a great Savior. Yes. We love, praise, and glorify you, Jesus. And also we pray in his precious holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Moving down to the approval of the minutes, October the eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, approval of the minutes.
I'll move. Second.
Motion second, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Propose no? Motion carries. And down to the agenda, we need to amend the agenda to add, uh, under business item number four, so I need a motion second to amend the agenda.
I'll so move that we amend the agenda.
Motion second, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Propose no? Motion carries. Dr. Coker, personnel report.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Hicks. I do want to officially let the board know that, uh, at the end of my contract on July the third, I will be officially retiring on July the fourth. That is, I'll be able to remember that because that's Independence Day and it will be true independence when I, when I actually retire. And so I'm telling you this now so that we will have plenty of time to be able to put together a, um, a procedure and going forth and being able for this board to be able to select the next superintendent. And by the way, let me congratulate, uh, each of you who went through the election process and, and for being, uh, voted back on the school board. Uh, I think that I will be leaving this board and this school system in great shape with the caliber and the quality of people that we have here. And so, um, just wanted to make that official. Uh, I know that I've had some of our media saying, you know, when are we, when am I going to hear some of it? Well, now you're hearing it. And I didn't want to disturb or distract from the election process, and so that's the reason I actually chose now to do it. So we'll put a timeline together, uh, for the board to maybe look at in December to see about naming and, uh, going through the process of searching, taking applications, interviews, and all that, uh, for the selection of the next superintendent. That's all the personnel I have. Thank you, Dr. Coker. Moving down to business.
Mr. Hicks, I'd like to say something first. I've only been on this board for four years, but I've been dealing with it for forty-something years. And going through COVID and all the things we've had to deal with, he has done a fantastic job.
Yes.
I want to let you know I appreciate you very much.
Thank you. Yes.
Any more comments?
I've known Dr. Coker for years, when he was a teacher and administrator, and, uh, I've worked with him for years and years, and, and just want to say I just have, it's been a joy for me to, to know you and to work with you. And I just appreciate all that you've put in to this system as the superintendent. You've done an awesome job, and, uh, I've only been on the board for four years, but it's been, uh, wonderful to serve with, with, under, I mean, the superintendent and a board like we have. It's been wonderful. We're, we're really blessed.
Thank you, Sherry. Y'all, I got eight more months to work, so.
But you're still being held accountable, right?
That's right.
Any more comments?
What I'd like to say, uh, Dr. Weber, you have, I'm Dr. Weber, see there, I've got, I've been, I've been on about four superintendents here, so I get them running together of an hour. And Dr. Coker, you have been really, really efficient in your job, I want to tell you that. And, uh, I certainly appreciate the job you've done, and, and I look forward to working to you till you leave. How about that?
Thanks, Sherry.
Okay. Moving down to business. Item number one. Greg Manley, do we have anybody signed up for item number one?
Uh, no, Ms. Hicks, we do not.
Okay. Consideration of approval of amendment to an application, AL two-one-three-oh-six, general obligation bonds, uh, East Washita Perry School District State Board Commission Financial Disclosure Form, Ms. Micas.
Board, this is just more of a technicality. There was an amendment to one of the forms that we, uh, have to report to the bond commission on with our outstanding bonds. So we had to make that, that correction, um, to the disclosure, and this is the corrected form that, um, goes to the bond commission.
Okay. Do we have a motion in a second for approval of item number one?
I'll so move.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion from the board? No discussion? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Propose no? Motion carries. Moving down to item number two, Ms. Manley, you have anybody sign up for item number two?
No, sir, I do not.
Okay. In that financial report for September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, Ms. Micas?
Uh, this is the financial report for the period ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. We are three months into our fiscal year at the end of September. For the general fund, we're ending the period with ninety-seven percent of the budgeted fund balance as we go through the year, uh, with our revenue, or, I'm sorry, ninety-seven percent of fund balance of where we were last year, not the budgeted fund balance. Ninety-seven percent of where we were last year, which, um, I consider to be right on track with our budget as we, as we begin the year with twenty-nine point nine million in the general fund. In the District One M and O, we have twenty-seven point six million in fund balance, which is a little above where we were last year at this time, hundred and sixteen percent of our fund balance and where we were this time last year. Um, I would like to note, um, the next to the last page. Apparently I got ahead of myself, had something else in my calculator. We are not, we did not have a hundred and forty-eight million in revenues at this point of the year. I, so I did correct that number on my copy. It's thirty-one million, six hundred and ninety thousand, two eleven, which puts us at twenty point nine six percent of our budget revenues for the year, which is exactly where we should be according to our budget on the general fund. If you look on the third page, I don't want to go through all the numbers with you, just kind of point out some of the, some of the highlights. The East Washita bond construction, uh, there's thirty-five million in fund balance for the, for the month ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. We are underway. That money is already committed in construction projects that are ongoing. So we will be looking at issuing the remaining twenty million over the next, um, several months. Uh, probably before the end of this fiscal year, we'll be coming to you and asking you to, uh, issue the remainder of those bonds as we plan additional construction projects and get them underway so that we have money to pay for the contracts we are committing to as we commit to them. And then the two thousand nineteen storm damage construction, you'll see that it has a negative balance of three hundred and fourteen thousand. That represents just those items that we have had completing the cleanup of the two thousand nineteen storm damage, mainly completing Bowley Elementary in the current year. So those costs will ultimately be covered by the West Washita sales tax, but we're collecting those costs to have them all together in one place under this, um, storm damage construction account. Whenever we started that account, you know, we had, we had more than Bowley that was damaged in that storm, but Bowley is the one that's, that's taken the longest time. So what's remaining in there is just the finishing up of, of the Bowley project. But that will eventually zero itself out as we cover those funds from the West Washita sales tax.
Do we have a motion in a second to approve the financial report for September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-two?
I'll so move that we approve the financial report for September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Motion second, any, any discussion from the board? No discussion, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Propose no? Motion carries. Moving down to item number three, Construction Renovation Projects Report, Mr. Steven Hempel.
Mr. Hicks, board, obviously I'm not Mr. Hempel.
Mr. Todd Gass.
Uh, Steven, they asked me to update you on the, uh, project report. You do have a status report in your folder from TBA. Uh, before I get to that, just give you an update, uh, last, uh, week on November the ninth, we did have our monthly, um, construction update at Sterlington Middle Project, uh, Mr. Manley, Mr. Graves were there, and several from the district office. Uh, we are on schedule on that project, uh, great deal of the steel is up. We finally have block on site now, and they're going to start laying blocks. So everything is progressing, uh, forward with that, with that build right now. As far as your, uh, TBA projects, uh, referring to your status report, uh, you can see the projects that we have ongoing there with Bowley, West Washita Highland, and then the OPSB Canopies. At Bowley, punch list items are still being completed, uh, facility is obviously occupied. This morning at West Washita, we had our monthly meeting. You can kind of see where we are there, what they're doing, uh, with replacing the welding shop roof to get the appropriate color, uh, on that roof. Final punch list, the welding shop, shop is expected to be soon, uh, as they continue to work on the, uh, renovations to the front of the school. They're progressing along. Uh, Mr. Mayfield told us today that the punch list, he would, uh, begin on December the fifth. Mr. Brandon's team will come in and, and start looking at that punch list then, and, and their hope is that we would move into that completed, uh, renovation, uh, by, during the Christmas holidays. Okay? But we'll see how that goes, but they were out working this morning. Highland Roofing Project, see, uh, Mr. McCormick opened those bids, uh, Southern Roofing, uh, got that bid, and they will. The notice to proceed has not been issued, but is expected soon, and then the canopy proj- projects around the district. Man's Construction, um, got that bid, and, and Waylon, his office will be working with TBA to get those documents done. So that's the report. Uh, Tim is here if you have any questions on his projects, uh, but those are the projects that we have right now for construction.
Any questions about the construction report? No questions? Do you have anybody to sign up?
I do not have a card to make a comment on that particular area.
Moving down to item number four is deleted, so, uh, does somebody want to speak on that, Architect?
No, that's the expulsion, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, that, I'm, I jumped ahead of myself, excuse me. Moving down to number five, Request to Address the Board Regarding Racial Harassment, Ms. Amber Lewis. Leven's.
Leven.
Leven's, I'm sorry, Leven's.
I'm here to speak for Ms. Leven since she can't be here today.
Are you Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Bell, uh, before you start your comments, uh, Ms. Leven's had asked for the opportunity to come and address the board today, and apparently, uh, she's not here now. You signed one of the comment cards to speak on this agenda, is that correct?
Correct.
And, and before we start on that, I just wanted to make a couple of comments on behalf of the board, and I've addressed this, uh, in an email response. First of all, Ms. Leven has, as you know, uh, an Office for Civil Rights complaint pending, uh, that she's filed involving the school board. Because that matter is pending, uh, board members are at liberty to comment or discuss that, and I've explained that, uh, to Ms. Leven in the past. So we're not going to get into the details of OCR complaint, uh, today because that matter is pending.
It would be best that you don't.
Excuse me?
It would be best that you don't.
Well, we're, we're not going to talk about OCR complaints today. We've been in communication with the investigator at OCR. That's ongoing, and they've communicated with us, and, and they're following it up, and we're cooperating with OCR in connection with investigation. Before you, uh, make whatever comments that you're going to make this morning, I just want to remind you, uh, there's a board policy, it's BCBI. It's called Public Participation in School Board Meetings. And people that request an opportunity to address an agenda item as you have, uh, are going to be recognized to make your comments, but there are a couple of.
Ten months later.
There are a couple of restrictions, uh, in the, uh, policy that I just want to mention to you. Number one, uh, because of the policy, uh, you're not going to be permitted in this courtroom, in this context, in the board meeting, to ask questions or make requests to the board or staff. Secondly, uh, there won't be any kind of, uh, comments or comments relative to the performance of specific employees, uh, mentioned in the context of the board meeting. There are other times and opportunities, uh, for you to do that, but I just want to caution you that we're not going to talk about specific individuals, specific employees, or individual, uh, employees, uh, that are administrators, uh, for the board. But, uh, just to preface your comments, I want to, I want to mention that.
Sure. What would be those other times and opportunities, if I could ask that?
Well, my understanding is, is that there, there have been discussions in the past, uh, involving Ms. Leven's. Uh, now, if you wanted to, to schedule an, an appointment to come speak with staff, uh, outside of the context of the board meeting, uh, you can do that if you follow the procedure to do that.
Yeah, I've tried that.
Thank you.
Can you tell me when, do I have a timer or anything?
Three minutes.
Okay. Uh, my name is Brian Bellis, and I'm here to speak on behalf of my thirteen-year-old stepson and his mother. And to every parent in this town, I'm begging you to learn and know wholeheartedly where your children are being sent every day and who is caring for them. I would like to speak to you all about racial harassment inside of Washita Perry Schools. I will not be able to make this presentation on racial harassment without touching on education, and it's not possible to speak on education without discussing leadership. Amber spoke with the school board in January and begged for help, help so that our sons could get the same education as all other students. I want to make note here that my stepsons are Hispanic. Uh, few things are worshipped more than West Monroe High School and West Monroe High School football in this town. West Monroe High School was built a lifetime ago in nineteen fifty-three. In nineteen fifty-four, the federal government told this entire nation that segregation is unconstitutional with Brown versus Board of Ed- Education. Towns like this were forced to desegregate. They had to be told because morally they did not believe it. When the first children of color walked through the doors of these schools, they knew they were not welcome. They knew this by the Confederate flag flying over their head and by the people of this town screaming slurs at them. People, it is now twenty twenty-two, the twenty-first century. As I stand before you today, obviously a white man born and raised in the South, I'm telling you, you were all stuck in the past. My children only want an equal education to your children and grandchildren. They do not want to walk under racist symbols. My son did not want to be called racist names, and neither of my sons want to celebrate the Confederate symbolism and rhetoric that led to him being called racist names and assaulted multiple times. My thirteen-year-old Hispanic stepson was called an illegal immigrant in the school. He was battered in the halls, threatened, and there was a knife brought to school to make good on those threats. Everything I say I can prove. He was told by the administration, unnamed, that this is his fault and that the civil rights of the white kid who brought the knife to school are equally protected under the law. It's because this town has no real leadership in education. We asked to speak at one of these meetings for ten months. We were denied mysteriously without reason for ten months. I just want to make the rest of this town aware, this is how you conduct these meetings. Parents are not allowed to easily and openly speak. Parents are not allowed to ask questions. This is why nothing ever changes in this town. This is why these schools fail so many people. The administration has been allowed to do whatever they please with no consequence since their inception. Children are not as safe in these schools as they could be, and I have proof. My wife brought our kids here for a life away from other violence, only to be failed by their public school. I am requesting after the board meeting to address the issue of racism from unnamed school board members just last week. This is a pressing and immediate issue that you have all refused to address me.
Time's up.
So is that request denied? Should I send that some other way? I would like to talk about the overt racist things that certain people on this board have said to me that I have recordings of.
Well, your time's up, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Moving down to item number ten, valuation of bids, uh, item number one, bid number twenty-five, twenty-three. The bid item is train controllers fundraisers eser, nine hundred thousand dollars budget.
All right, thank you, board. You have in front of you the valuation tab sheets, and starting with the first one, the train controllers, we only had one responsive bidder, and that was Train US. And, uh, so we would like approval to award that to the lowest responsive bidder, which is Train US Incorporated.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to accept the bid for train controllers?
So move.
Greg, any comments on item number ten?
Sherry, we have no further comments for the meeting.
Okay, but I had to call them out one at a time, I'm sorry. Okay, motion in a second to approve the bid?
Second.
All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Propose no? Motion carries. Moving down to item number two, you want to comment on that one?
Yes, sir. That one has been extended, and we would like, I'd like to seek permission to award this to the lowest responsive, uh, bidder. It will open on December the first. Instead of opening today, we did have to make, uh, some changes to the documents and, uh, amendments to them's addendum, so we have done that, and we'd like to, and I present it back to you at the December meeting.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to approve the, the Richwood Multi-Purposes, just for the agenda, on the agenda?
Yes, uh, on the multi-purpose. I was contacted yesterday by Architect, I think Mr. Cedric Hempel, to indicate, uh, that, uh, we were asking for an extension because, uh, that was something inadvertently left out of the, uh, plans that were, uh, put out for bid. And so this would give contractors an opportunity, uh, to receive whatever was left out.
Yes.
And that they would, uh, be able to have a more responsible, uh, bid as, as, as a result of that. However, uh, Mr. Hempel was here, and if he'd like to share, uh, some additional comments, you know, we'd like to hear from him.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Cedric Hempel with Land Three Architects. Uh, actually, uh, Mr. McCoy has eloquently described the situation. There was an, uh, item, uh, information left out of the construction documents that was pertinent to the project, and we've already, uh, issued an addendum, uh, postponing, postponing the bids to, uh, December the first. And so the contractors are aware of this. They have the, uh, documentation that they need to prepare the bids properly, so, uh, we, we can move on, uh, as, as been previously discussed.
I think what, I think, uh, as has been shared with me, it would probably be wise just to allow those contractors who have already placed bids to just receive that information rather than putting it back out for bid again. I think Elmer.
To date, no one has done on the central bidding site, but those documents have been uploaded, and everyone that looked has the, will automatically get an email that a change is.
Thank you.
If I could comment, um, we're not pulling the bid. We're only, we, because we were within the window, the bids were scheduled to open today. We had to defer them for a week because we'll be on, uh, Thanksgiving holiday next week. That pushed it back to December the first. So that's where we got December the first. We're only amending the bid. We're not starting over. So we're only issuing an amended amendment with the additional detail page that was not in the original documents. So when the bid was opening today, we were asking for approval of the lowest responsible bidder, given that it's December the first. The board meets again the second Tuesday of December. You can either go ahead with the, the planned approval of the lowest responsible bidder or, um, defer this, table this item, um, to be brought back in December for approval. I mean, it's, it's completely up to the board.
I'm prepared to, to, to move that, uh, uh, we give you all the, uh, consent to accept the lowest responsible bidder.
Okay.
And that way, that would salvage some, some, some.
Right, that would give an additional two weeks rather than waiting to the December board meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Manley, do we have somebody to just speak on item number two?
Uh, no, Ms. Hicks, we do not.
Okay. Do we have a motion in a second to approve this bid?
Mr. President?
As it comes in?
I, I, I would move that, uh, we, uh, move forward with this, given that those who bid it on it will receive the, the supplement, uh, information, that they would be able to adjust their bid, and that we give the administration the, uh, authority, uh, to accept the lowest responsible bidder at that particular time.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion in a second, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Propose no? Motion carries. Moving down to item number three.
Mr. Geis brought this one up. This is the three pavilions, Sterlington High School, Robinson Elementary, Richwood High School. We did have three responses, Reagan Builders, Man Construction, and Grindstone. Man Construction was the, uh, lowest bidder, lowest responsive bidder, so we're asking your approval to proceed further with Man Construction.
Okay, we have a motion in a second?
I'll so move, we approve them.
Second.
Bid.
Okay. Mr. Manley, do we have anybody signed up for item number three?
Uh, no, Ms. Hicks, we do not.
Okay. All in favor, yes?
Need some comment?
No. Comments?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, uh, do we have any idea, Tim, when man might start on these pavilions? Has that been discussed, or, in your opinion?
Yes, sir. It, it, it depends on if the weather holds it out. Uh, it's the first thing that everybody knows about foundation. And, and two schools, it, it seems like the area that they're going to be a little bit too wet to start right now. But they're all going to live forward with ordering the structure. Uh, that's the longest lead item, so that, that's going to be first priority, get those buildings ordered and, uh, get them coming. So, uh, my guess is the weather is going to prevent him from starting his foundation system, uh, as quickly as he can. But, you know, we'll see, we'll see what the weather does.
Yeah, just keep me updated on the timeline. The only other thing I want to bring up, too, and I think I talked to Dr. Coker, I know I talked to Clint on this, about, uh, tables, uh, that go under these pavilions that's being built, and I know Clint had mentioned that, uh, there was going to be eser money available to pay for the tables, so, uh.
Yes, sir. We started the process ac- asking the schools for the items they're needing, and then we will take it to, to Clint for budget approval.
Okay. Any more comments?
How big are these? What's the size of these?
Tim, what's the size of the pavilions?
Uh, average size is about, uh, thirty, forty feet wide by about ninety feet long.
Yeah, huge.
They're, they're, they're good sized pavilions. I, I thought we got some good size.
And just for clarification, is this with, being accepted with the first alter- alternate?
There are lots of alternates there, but I'm not sure exactly if we want to accept them.
I, I would recommend, I would recommend we accept it with the alternate number one, because we were way under budget on the three pavilions. I think we had a budget of one point two million, and it came in even with the alternates at one million forty thousand. So I'd recommend we include the alternates in, in our, uh, final bid approval. I amend my motion to that aspect.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second on?
Uh, Reverend Carter, second?
Yes.
To, to his aspect on, he made the motion differently than.
Yeah, I see, yeah.
You'll make a second, all right. Any more, any more conversations about this item?
Uh, Tim, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Okay, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Propose no? Motion carries. Moving down to item number four, bid number one-two-dash-twenty-three, box trucks, two, eser, funds one twenty-five thousand each.
This is for reporting only. We had no responsive bidders.
No responsibility? Uh, so we're going to rebid that, or?
No, sir. We'll be able to take other options.
Okay.
Now.
All right. Moving down to item number five, bid number thirteen-twenty-three. Moving down to item number five, bid number thirteen, twenty-three, refrigerated truck, CP, CFS, one hundred and fifty thousand.
Same report, no responses.
No response to that one. Item number six. Bid number twenty-seven, twenty-three, West Monroe High School Baseball School Board, thirty thousand dollars, which was West Washita sales tax.
Yes, sir, this one opens on November the twenty-ninth, so I'm seeking permission to award this to the lowest responsive bidder for timeline because they're wanting it in place before the baseball season begins.
Mr. Manley, do you have any comments on that item number six?
No, Mr. Hicks, no comments.
Okay. Moving down to permission to bid, we have none. And our next board meeting is December the thirteenth at twelve o'clock, Dr. Coker?
You're going to vote on, vote on number six?
Can you vote on six?
On number six? I'm, I'm sorry, getting ahead of myself. We need a motion in a second on the West Monroe High School School Board, need a motion in a second.
I move with grant permission to accept the lowest bid on the school board for West Monroe High School.
A second.
A second. Any discussion from the board?
What, what is the budget on that, Tommy? I mean, what is it, seventy thousand, a hundred thousand or?
Do we know?
A hundred, I think.
Okay.
Any more discussion from the board? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. No permissions to bid. Our next meeting is December the thirteenth, twelve o'clock, Dr. Coker?
I don't have anything, I just wish all of you a very happy Thanksgiving next week.
Yeah. I have a motion to adjourn?
I saw move.